All right, call the meeting order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. House Member Dennis Brown will be giving that tonight.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for every citizen that lives in the town of Fountain Hills because they make Fountain Hills Fountain Hills. We thank you for our first responders. We thank you for all of the volunteers, the staff, and the council that is currently guiding this town through tough, tough economic times. We ask you Almighty God, to please be with our first responders and make certain they get home every night to their families. We also ask Almighty God that you be with every volunteer, every staff member, and every member of this council to make good solid decisions for the citizens that make Fountain Hills. We ask these things through the Holy Spirit and in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Dennis. Look for a motion to adjourn. So moved April Fools.
He beat you to it.
Suggested by another council member. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Ashambo.
Here.
And Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Get some upcoming Fountain Hills community events to announce on, obviously, the Arts on the Avenue, Farmer's Market has been very popular. Today it was very robust again, fortunately had some great weather, and that's every Thursday down here in downtown Fountain Hills on the avenue. Tomorrow night, we have a, I'm sorry, no, the week from tomorrow, we have a double feature. This is, these are, this one's the adults movies, not that the kids couldn't come and enjoy them, but these are more for, not for the younger ones. A double feature on the ninth, starting at seven o'clock, and another great community event sponsored by citizens in our community and businesses. And then on Saturday, we have a hike, a preserve hike, and it's actually a drive for those that are physically challenged can take advantage of getting driven into the preserve, leaving over there by Copperwind on Eagle Ridge Drive. And that same day, that evening, there is the kids moving in the park, cloudy with a chance of meatballs at Fountain Park, of course. Hopefully, weather will be terrific. It looks, looks pretty good. The weather was, didn't quite get as bad as it was forecasted to be today, so hopefully we'll have some great weather going forward. This is again for next weekend. And that same day in the afternoon, out at McDowell Mountain Regional Park, you can find the ranger out of the nursery tank. There's a lot of activity still occurring out at McDowell Mountain Regional Park, and I just thought we'd highlight a couple of them here. And then also next weekend on Sunday, a very popular pause around the park, Adopt-a-thon, is occurring down at Fountain Park, and from, I think it's 10 till 2, I think it is, 10 to 4, do you know? I think it's, I know it starts at 10, but check, check the ADOG site for more information if you need to, or come on down at 10 on Sunday. Then we have out at McDowell Mountain Regional Park, Snoring Desert 101 on Wednesday, April 14th at 10:00 a.m. And opening at the Community Theater on the ninth through the 25th, there is You Can't Take It With You at the Community Theater, of course. This weekend is the last running of the youth, Community Theater production, so if you haven't gotten out there yet for the youth production of You Don't Have to Take It, please take in that as well. And then below, there are some Fountain Hills varsity athletic events occurring, lots of baseball, softball, golf, and track and field. So encourage you to be involved in the athletics and the businesses, and of course, the organizations in our community. Now move to presentation. We're fortunate to have Vice Mayor Rodney Glassman from the city of Tucson here, and he's going to introduce us to water harvesting and gray water ordinances. So welcome. Thank you for coming up this evening.
Thank you.
We have kind of environmentally themed presentations this, this evening. After Vice Mayor Glassman, we'll hear from our staff on some additional items.
Did it rap? Did it rap?
Oh, my God.
It is. I think we were all betting when you were gonna do that again. I was just reading what I was given. Well, welcome, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much for coming up tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Dickey. Thank you for inviting us, or thank you for inviting me, this evening to talk to you about rainwater harvesting and gray water plumbing, and some of the great things that the city of Tucson has done in regards to water conservation. Prior to the meeting, I was able to pass out one of our Going Green Bags, but also a children's book on rainwater harvesting that my wife and I recently wrote as a project prior to our marriage. And we're in the process right now of distributing 11,000 of those children's books to all the graduating kindergartners in Pima County this spring. As you know, water and water conservation is an important issue for our entire state, and Tucson is proud to be leading in that effort. In regards to our presentation today, achieving consensus on sustainability, Tucson's water harvesting and gray water harvesting ordinances. I was in a unique position when elected to the Tucson City Council two years ago to champion our water conservation efforts because of some of my background. I hold a PhD in arid land resource sciences from the University of Arizona. I spent four years working for Congressman Grahava, who's the congressman who represents a significant portion of the Colorado River. But I also spent four years working for KB Home, the home building company. So when I was elected, these were some of the things that I was very passionate about. As you all know, water and water conservation and the issue of sustainability and access to water is something that is no longer just a Tucson issue or even an Arizona issue. Frankly, it's becoming an international issue. And communities and countries across the world are trying to figure out how best to ensure that over the long run, their constituents, their citizens and their residents are going to be able to access a clean, sustainable water supply. Looking at our region where I come from, the city of Tucson, this is a map of our 2050 Tucson Water Plan. And as you can see, that checked blue area is the next bucket of water. The water that we're going to be looking for as a community, because as you see with our growth line come 2017, the city of Tucson is no longer going to have a sustainable water supply, just looking at the Colorado River, just looking at our groundwater supply. So that is constantly what we are looking at as a community, as many communities across the state are looking at. Where is our future bucket of water? Drought and climate change aren't just Tucson issues, obviously, as you know, they're statewide issues, they're regional issues, and they continue to impact our cities and towns as we work on planning for our future. Now Tucson's in a unique position, which is why we champion these ordinances, and that's because of the fact that geographically, Arizona sits at the bottom of the Colorado River, as you all know. Nevada, California, each gets the opportunity to drink well before our state. But what makes it even worse for Tucson is that we're also at this bottom of the Central Arizona Project. Tucson is actually the largest municipal customer of the Central Arizona Project, and so as you all up north continue to drink, we receive the remnants of that. So as shortages hit the Colorado, as shortages hit the CAP project, we are going to be most immediately impacted because we are at the bottom of the line. Now, storm water is the fancy word for rainwater, as you know, and communities across Arizona, Tucson specifically, have treated rainwater, which is a scarce and renewable resource, as a waste product. We treat it as a waste product in the sense that we make developers get rid of it. In the city of Tucson, we require all developers to demonstrate within a 48-hour period how they are going to take the rainwater and get it off their property. It's a unique, it's a unique issue for us, but I believe that a lot of other communities around the state have those kinds of rules. Instead of capturing it, we require them to get rid of it, and what that water does is it creates urban street flooding, it, it creates flashy, floody peaks on water courses, and storm water quality issues. Some communities across Arizona have storm water districts, our community does not. And so what happens is it continues through erosion to damage our infrastructure and to put more expenses on our cities. Now, one of the things that we've done in Tucson, and I am up here visiting, but I ask you not to steal this idea, we've had some problems with spring training, some of our teams have been going north, Scott Smith likes to joke with me about it, though I don't necessarily think it's funny when Mesa does that. But we've been able to harness our forefathers' lack of planning when it comes to the issue of rainfall, to actually create a new tourism industry. And we've done it down in Southern Arizona, I had requests that you don't steal the idea, but what we've done is we've created the urban kayaking. And it's a, it's a real way to bring people to Southern Arizona to demonstrate our lack of planning from previous councils, but also to really bring people to our community. But in all seriousness, there's five great things about rainwater. Number one, there's lots of it. In fact, the city of Tucson, believe it or not, receives more rainfall than we use in water as a community. So if we could figure out how to capture it appropriately and utilize it, we actually would have a net positive when it comes to our water table. Secondly, rainwater's free, as you know. Third, it falls where you need it, and we say it half jokingly, but if you design your property correctly, the water will literally flow wherever it is you want it to go. Number four, plants like it, it's low in salt and high in nitrogen. And lastly, and this is the one I like to share with business people, is if you harvest it, you can stop spending money to get rid of it. Being from the development industry myself, I know that we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, on basins, on retention detention projects, all to get rid of that very scarce resource that we as city and council people really are looking to try to figure out how we can get more of it. Another great thing about water in Arizona, it's a, it's a, and rainwater specifically, is it's a, it's a, it's a less, least cost alternative to other sources of water. If you look at the Central Arizona Project, it was billed at $4 billion, it's about $114 per acre foot. Additionally, you have to remember, because of the Native American adjudications, those CAP water rights are going to be decreasing as the Native American tribes continue to gain more access through the courts to the water that they deserve. Additionally, desalinizing bracketed groundwater costs about $300 per acre foot, and desalinizing seawater is still about $1,000 an acre foot, and that would be if we were near the coast. Rainwater harvesting by definition is intercepting storm water from a roof, driveway, soil, or other subsurface and putting it to beneficial use. Now, the city of Tucson started early when it comes to rainwater harvesting. In fact, we had a strong grassroots movement, and in the mid 1990s, the city of Tucson created qualitative requirements by putting together the Water Harvesting Guidance Manual. As a former employee at KB Home, I took that manual, and I went into Development Services, and I said, "I would like to do some rainwater harvesting." We were being required to build a 25-acre basin with an average per acre cost of about $150,000 an acre. So I could afford to pretty much do whatever we needed to do to use rainwater harvesting. I took it into Development Services, and the Development Services fellow said, "Thank you, but that was written by the Transportation Department. We don't know anything about this." And I was very frustrated, but I said, "There's a lot of ways to do rainwater harvesting," and we demonstrated some of them. Microbasins, as you know, they're great for pedestrian areas, they work well in mixed-use developments. There's swales, which is simply an undulation of the soil in order to capture that rain as it goes along. There's infiltration basins, which I, I'm sure that your community is using, which are great for recreational areas. French drains, which is a technology that, I had a fourth grader at one of our elementary schools actually asking me about French drain, so I had to look it up when I got home. But it's another great way to harvest rain. There's some other very inexpensive ways, curb cutouts, when a developer's putting in their curbs, as you can imagine, and you should think about the last new development you went to, they put in the curbs, and then on the other side of the curbs are the trees with drip irrigation systems. So all the time the rainwater's coming, it's going into the street, meanwhile, we're using our potable water in order to do vegetation. Porous pavement's another great example. And then lastly, the most prime example of rainwater harvesting is a cisterns. And there's all different kinds, you can design them into the building, you can bury them underground now, or you can actually decorate them, and they look very nice. When you say rainwater harvesting, people think cisterns. And one of the things we're trying to educate people on is we travel around the state, and one of the things that hopefully you'll learn from our little children's book for first graders, is that actually, the least expensive way to do rainwater harvesting is just utilizing soil and planting. You don't need a cistern. You do not need anything above ground unless you want to have it. What I decided to do as a, as a candidate, was I campaigned on a commitment that we would require rainwater harvesting on all new commercial development. But what I did is I committed to provide everyone with an equal seat at the table. That meant the home builders and the realtors, all the way to the Sierra Club and the labor unions. Everyone was going to work together. And we did that by passing a motion at our mayor and council meeting, assembling city staff, and then assembling public representatives from throughout the community and getting the elected officials out of the way. We did not write the ordinance in Tucson. It was written by representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, from the Arizona Builders Alliance, from all the different groups that would be impacted by having those ordinances. We developed the ordinance, they developed the ordinance, we adopted the ordinance, we prepared the development standards, and now we're building partnerships for pilot studies. What made the ordinance so special is it is the first of its kind in the country that quantifies commercial water use. Over 20 organizations ranging from those various groups that I talked about came out and spoke in favor of the ordinance, and Mayor Schlumpf probably knows Mayor Walkup, who's been, our mayor's been down there for almost 12 years now, he said it was the best public hearing he's ever been to, which says a lot for our mayor. The main components of the ordinance is it's for new commercial only, so it literally sets the bar for new development. We don't try to go back in time because that wouldn't be fair, that would be onerous. Number two, the percentage that we suggested, which was actually, or that we require was brought forward by the development community, was 50%, because 50% is a sweet spot, where you can use cisterns if you want, or you can just design your parking lot appropriately, make sure you use curb cutouts, and it actually doesn't require any new infrastructure whatsoever. It requires a water harvesting plan and water budget, so if there's a development that wants to have grass, that wants to have more extensive vegetation, they can do that, but then they're going to have to demonstrate that they're going to be able to do more rainwater harvesting to make it successful. We provide three years to establish the plants, because as you know, living in the arid areas, it requires time for the roots to get hold, especially with these native vegetation. We meter outdoor water use, we require soil moisture irrigation controls, and there's a 50% relief requirement in there, because as you know, if drought does come in a more significant way, we don't want our developers to lose one of the largest investments that they have in their project, which is their vegetation. And so we have all those protections in there. This was designed by the builders for the builders to make sure it could be successful. One of the other things that we were able to do was we were also able to provide a two-year timeframe, so from the passage of the ordinance to when it takes effect this June 2010, we provided the developers, knowing that we need timelines, and we need the ability to bid things out, and we need the ability to plan, we put that in at the time that we wrote the ordinance. Common misconceptions about rainwater harvesting. Water harvesting recharges the aquifer. In all actuality, unless your aquifer is within 250 feet of the surface, that water's not going to seep down. And so in our community, for example, we don't have our water table that close to the surface, so therefore, rainwater harvesting is another great way to utilize that rainwater. Why harvest rainwater when it rarely rains? As we talked about earlier, harvesting maximizes the rainwater you already have. Harvesting rainwater breeds mosquitoes, it's just not true, as long as you infiltrate the soil within 24 hours to prevent breeding. You've just got to make sure that that water's getting spread out, which fortunately in the desert, it always is, because it's always so dry. You must use tanks to harvest rainwater. As you saw, there are a number of different ways to utilize rainwater harvesting that don't involve the tank. In fact, in the little book I passed out, Jeremy the Jackrabbit learns all about them, so it's pretty easy. Harvesting rainwater will deprive the washes of water, it's just not true. It reduces some runoff, but not all. The lessons that we learned as a community, number one, use demand-driven requirements, not supply-driven requirements. When I was a 29-year-old city council candidate, I ran around saying, "We need to capture all the rain that falls." And the environmentalists were the ones that came back and said, "That doesn't make any sense, because we, they don't need all the rain that falls. We're talking about the potable water, the potable water that they're using for landscaping." You know, it doesn't make sense to take drinking water and put it on plants when there's an alternative. So it was actually the environmental community that came and said, "Let's do something that's reasonable." Provide implementation details before adoption for support. I know in the city of Tucson, our practice used to be, we pass an ordinance and then we create language. You'd be surprised, or probably up here you already know, how many, how much more receptive the business community is when they're allowed to help create the ordinance and they're allowed to help push it forward. Start with outdoor requirements for simplicity. It's easy to measure, it makes sense. 40% of the water use on a commercial development is for landscaping. So we literally are able to cut our water use in half on new commercial development, which in turn also means that everyone can be more excited about new development, because we know that it has a more positive impact on our community, we encourage the use of native plants. Now, real quickly, we'll go through gray water. Gray water reuse is diverting used water from washing machines, bathtubs, showers, and lavatory sinks to beneficial use. Gray water should never be confused with black water, which is the water that comes from your toilet, it's the water that comes from your kitchen sink, where you have the foodstuffs in there. Gray water is something unique and different, and what's interesting is that 40%, once again, that 40% number, 40% of the water from the average home is for landscaping. Once again, we're taking our drinking water and we're using it to feed our plants. Now, in Arizona, gray water technology, gray water development started early, in fact, in 2001, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality created simpler, simple residential gray water use rules. And what you see in this picture right here, which is really neat, it's a diagram of using a gray water system, and it's actually a yard where that specific gray water system's being used.
We don't allow stoves to be out on patios in Fountain Hills.
A stove? That's not a stove, Mr. Mayor.
That's a dishwasher.
That's a washing machine?
I'm not sure what that is.
And next to it is some white boxes. It's a black washing machine. But you threw me off there for a second.
Very.
And don't you guys camp out in Fountain Hills at all?
Do a lot of camping.
Yeah, a little Dutch oven in your backyard, that's a good thing. Our ordinance adoption was simple. We chose residential because of the fact that it's so easy to do, and because the amount of gray water created is so large. There's a large potential to irrigate with gray water, and plumbing needs to be done at the time of construction. Many of you have probably built a new home or moved into a new home, and when you were developing that home, your home builder probably asked, "Where do you want your cable?" Probably asked, "Where do you want your ceiling fans?" "Where do you want your alarm system?" The same thing is true of gray water, you would never want those wires running through your home. Same as well, you, you wouldn't want those pipes, you know, going through your living room. But the same also holds true for resale, because if you think about it, maybe you don't use cable, maybe at the time you're building your home, you're not going to want cable, or you're not going to want ceiling fans, or you're not going to want an alarm system, but you knew when you were building that home that if you pre-wired for those things at the time of construction, then when it came time to sell that home, the next buyer might want cable, might want ceiling fans. And frankly, in the hot Arizona desert, the next home buyer might want to use a gray water system, which is why plumbing at the time of construction makes sense, because it makes our homes green-ready as a community. The main components of the ordinance are for new single families and duplexes, separate stub outs for washers. And the reason for that is because your washing machine is the easiest way to create gray water, because it runs, it's a large amount of water, and it's consistent, because most people are doing laundry on a consistent basis. So what we did, and this was the business community's suggestion, is we actually have a separate line, doesn't cost any extra, from our washing machines, and it works really well. For new single-family homes only, it drains from the lavatory, showers, bathtubs, and other segregated drains. We require only the gray water stub out. This is not a requirement that says you have to buy a gray water system, which could cost up to thousands of dollars depending on your vegetation, just like when you pre-wired for your cable, it didn't say that you needed to get HBO and NHL channel and everything else. It's up to the individual buyer. All this does is set the bar for new construction, to make sure that it's going to work. Misconceptions. Odors are always a problem, the reality is, if you distribute your gray water to multiple points under mulch to infiltrate fast and prevent odor, then nothing happens. Number two, you can't eat food from a gray water-supplied garden. I'm sure all the members of the mayor and council wash all of their fruits and vegetables before eating them from the grocery store. And the same thing would obviously be true if you're growing something in gray water. Plus, you do not want to eat the roots or tubers, so no growing potatoes in your backyard in Fountain Hills if you're using gray water. That's our one warning for you. Municipal sewer systems will be deprived of gray, because the waste won't drain. There has not been a single example anywhere in the country of a community conserving too much water and the you-know-what not flowing you-know-where. So that's not as big a problem as people would like to make it out to be. Gray water is bad for soil, the reality is, if you, it maintains good soil health by avoiding products with salt or sodium, and by looting gray water basins with harvested rainwater as well. And lastly, gray water is unhealthy, not according to the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, which obviously is our state regulatory body in regards to gray water. Lessons learned from gray water. Keep the ordinance simple and flexible so it's adaptable to future technologies. Our ordinance simply takes the water to the wall. Does not take it outside, it does not require how you use it. Frankly, it doesn't even require that you use it. The issue is that the homes we build today, whether in Tucson or in Fountain Hills, are going to be here for generations to come. And the one thing that I can guarantee you is that in the future, Arizona will have water shortages. So the more that we can do as communities to be ready for water shortages, the better off we're going to be as cities and towns. We need to get a variety of technical input from grassroots to professional. Our technical standards group that was put together for this was 24 people. Everyone that applied was put on it, from the fellow in the neighborhood that had done it his own home 20 years after it was built, to the people that are building large-scale developments. We did not want anyone to not have a seat at the table, because we wanted everyone to be engaged. We involve the wastewater management agency in our area. Pima County does wastewater in Southern Arizona, and then Tucson provides the potable water. So for us, it's a little bit different. Work out details of implementation before adopting the ordinance to help garner support. Everyone came out in favor of this, these ordinances because of the fact that we allowed them to participate in writing them. Our next steps, we're conducting water harvesting and gray water pilot studies. In fact, many of you up here have probably heard of QuickTrip. I had never heard of QuickTrip before I was elected to the council, and they came to meet with me, and you've probably heard, had these same kind of meetings, that the business person comes in and says, "We're all over the country, it's a great business, talk to your friends and they'll tell you." You've all had that experience. I picked up the phone and I called my wife and I said, "Have you ever heard of QuickTrip?" And she said, "They have the best bathrooms anywhere in the country." Clean bathrooms, great donuts, so stay away from the donuts. But QuickTrip came to Tucson with six new locations, and they agreed to be pilot programs for our rainwater harvesting ordinance, and they are in compliance, 100% with all the, with all the stores that they're opening, but we also have a bank building that's going up, we have office buildings that are going up. These rainwater harvesting pilot projects are throughout our community, and they're working. That 50% number is the sweet spot. We're adjusting city codes to be compatible with the new ordinances, because as you know, cities have a way of getting in the way of our own ways of doing things. We're preparing for unintended consequences, and most importantly, we're educating staff and the public on new ordinances, because whether it's gray water or rainwater, people need to understand that it is a cost-effective way of doing conservation. I had a friend come in the other day, who's a businessman, and he said, "This rainwater harvesting ordinance is costing me hundreds of thousands of dollars. I just built a development six months ago, and it cost me $200,000." And I said, "Bert, it doesn't go into effect for another three months, I don't know what you're talking about." And so the reality is, we have to educate people, so they understand that this is good, this is clean, and it doesn't cost anything if done at the time of construction. And lastly, the reason we're here today is communicate regionally to share experiences and lessons. I have the ultimate incentive as the vice mayor of the city of Tucson to get everyone north of the Hila to start conserving more, because the reality is, we don't get to drink until after you do. And so we'd love for you to look at these ordinances, we'd love for you to consider other ways, and I know that you're doing quite a lot already, to consider how sustainability, but most importantly, water conservation can be a key component to what you all are doing. I believe there's a bright future. Arizona can be developed as the go-to source for water harvesting. I was in Atlanta this summer after doing air force training at Maxwell Air Force Base in Montgomery. I went down to Atlanta and presented at a rainwater harvesting conference. Over 500 people were there, and as, as we all know, the U.S. Green Building Council was in Phoenix just a few months ago. So we know the kind of economic development that can be attracted if we are the hub for creating new technologies, and Arizona truly can be, because we have to be when it comes to water conservation. It's good for business, it's a potential growth industry, and it creates new markets. So it's very important. Our commitments when I ran for office were adopting a commercial rainwater harvesting ordinance, adopting a gray water stub out ordinance. We've also in Tucson created a dedicated funding source for water conservation. Three cents per CCF on everyone's water bill goes to fund our conservation programs. The reason for that, if you lose, if you use less water, you actually pay less for conservation. It's a great way for us to correlate people's water use to the programs that we're doing. We also were able to change our landscaping requirements to increase the number of trees that we're requiring, which obviously lowers the heat island effect with new developments as well. And lastly, the city of Tucson was the recipient of the 2009 Environmental Achievement Awards from the EPA Region Nine for our work and commitment to protecting the environment. And I like to close with this slide. I'm an Eagle Scout. I don't know if any of you are involved in scouting at a younger age.
Stop pointing at me.
It's okay. Once an Eagle Scout, always an Eagle Scout. But this, a lot of the pictures that you saw today, and this technology of rainwater harvesting and graywater, I was educated during my campaign about them. The fact is, if you look back at quotations from the king of Moab, 850 B.C., he was telling everyone back then, "Build the cistern on your home." So it's not a new technology. But at the same time, it is new because we haven't been utilizing it as a state as much as we should be. And this is a home that was actually purchased by Brad Lancaster, who's an Eagle Scout, who shared a lot of the pictures that you all saw today in the presentation. This is the home that he purchased 10 years ago. And what's interesting about Brad Lancaster is Brad is the only person I know that does not have an electric bill and does not have a water bill. In fact, this home you see right here is completely off-grid. And what he decided to do when he purchased it is he decided to utilize passive rainwater harvesting. That means no cisterns. That means 100% of the water that he captures, he utilizes for his vegetation, right there on site. This picture was taken 10 years ago, and if you come to Tucson for a visit, this is what you'll see today. Rainwater harvesting works, graywater plumbing works. We're doing it in the city of Tucson, and we'd urge you to consider doing it as well. And with that, in addition to children's books and going green bags, what we've brought today, in addition to my city attorney who's here, are two booklets that contain all of the language that the city of Tucson used, both in print and digital form, as well as minutes from the meetings, because in order to adopt these ordinances, we had stakeholders that met over nine months, met over 32 times, working together with our city staff to create these ordinances, so that they could be adopted with a 7-0 vote. And so I'd love to present one to your mayor, I'd love to present one to your town attorney, and I'd love to answer any questions that you all have about these new conservation methods that we're using down in Tucson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Please bring them forward. Council members, any questions regarding water conservation? Thank you. Graywater? Water harvesting?
It's a dry subject, I know.
And Ginny, thanks for inviting him up here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming, Vice Mayor. We have borrowed some ordinances from you already. I think our Sowaro Preservation Ordinance, we might have heard about that at one of our first league conferences. And also, we have low-water landscaping. You've made this presentation in some other cities, correct?
I have, yes, thank you. This all got started, actually, at the Arizona League of Cities. We were there two years ago, I was there with Sarah Pressler, who's the mayor of Flagstaff, and we were talking about our conservation ordinances. And she invited me to go up to Flagstaff. Having heard that I was being invited to Flagstaff, Mayor Scott Smith from Mesa invited me to go to Mesa, and so I presented there as well. And in fact, since these ordinances were passed and adopted, we've presented, I've presented, I'm in Flagstaff, Mesa, Avondale, Sierra Vista, Sarita, Oro Valley, Morana, Atlanta. We've been traveling, and now obviously Fountain Hills. I've been traveling around the state especially, talking to mayors and councils, because though I'm a Democrat from Tucson, the reality is, the issue of water and water conservation, it isn't a Democrat issue, it isn't a Republican issue. It's an Arizona issue. And we need to do all we can together to conserve this resource and make sure that we're utilizing it. But what's really resonated, and hopefully it resonated with you today, is not just that we're doing these ordinances and that we're moving forward, but the fact that with the help and urging of elected officials such as yourselves, it is possible to get the Sierra Club and the Audubon Society and Habitat for Humanity and the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union sitting around the same table with the home builders and the realtors and the Chamber of Commerce and the Builders Alliance, because as long as we're working on issues that we are all in it together on, they can do that. And that's one of the things that we were able to do in Tucson.
Mayor? Vice Mayor, is there any interim besides actually adopting an ordinance? Have any of the other cities tried to incentivize it or do it in a way that's not, you know, immediately a mandate?
What we've done, what we did in Tucson, you have to remember, is we didn't do anything immediately. We passed it and then had, it was literally a 24-month period to allow the developers and the home builders to get ready for it. So they were able to do that. The city of Flagstaff, excuse me, has passed a rainwater harvesting ordinance since my presentation. And the town of Oro Valley has passed a rainwater harvesting ordinance since my presentation, which is interesting, because obviously, that just demonstrates that it's not a Republican or a Democratic issue whatsoever. So we've been able to get adoptions in a few communities. Avondale moved forward and actually sent it to their conservation committee, which I believe is working on drafting something as well. So the issue for us in Tucson was that there are certain things that should be incentivized, but the reality is, and you can do some more research, but the reality is that these ordinances don't cost anything. The rainwater harvesting ordinance literally costs zero if done at the time of construction. Some of you have probably been in the development industry, and to do curb cutouts does not cost you anything if done at the time of construction. To slope your parking lot differently doesn't cost you anything if done at the time of construction. And if we probably walk out into our parking lot right here, what you'll see is that there's berms with a tree on the top. Simply by not having that berm and having the tree at the bottom of that indentation, as well as a curb cutout, you'd be able to meet these standards. So this is one where we decided that we weren't going to incentivize to ask people to do the right thing, but what we were going to do was to create an across-the-board standard so that it could be fair for everyone.
Any other questions? Councilmember O'Leary?
Vice Mayor Glassman, thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it. Just kind of a quasi-technical question. You talked about the aquifer. Typically, they're significantly below the surface of the ground, hard for water to infiltrate into the aquifer. Is any work being done with respect to harvesting and trying to inject into the aquifer? Because I do recall, probably 15, 20 years ago, there was significant work being done by hydrologists in Tucson that were looking at injection methodology out around Morana, as a matter of fact. Is there a correlation there? Is that too expensive? Have people given up on that thought?
There's history, and you remember it quite well. When the Central Arizona Project Water was originally delivered to the city of Tucson and was directly served to the residents, no one had really done any research on the pH that was going through the pipes. And so there was severe water damage done years ago to homes because the materials in the water were much heavier than what the homes and the piping were used to, almost like your heart, if you started pumping a different kind of blood through it. Because of that, over a decade ago, the city of Tucson voted to actually amend our charter to where 100% of the water that comes from the Central Arizona Project is infused into the ground. We do recharge already. So we recharge our aquifer, and that's probably what you're thinking of. It doesn't need to be done with the rainwater because of the fact that what we do with a big chunk of our water from the aquifer is we pump it up, and over 40% of it goes to vegetation. So this is the way to actually save a lot of money, especially for the city of Tucson, because we're not needing to pull up as much as that we pump down to water our plants. But yeah, your history's correct.
Thank you. Interesting. Councilmember Archibald?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Glassman, isn't it? Yes, Glassman. In the first part, the rainwater management, you talked about it after the developments put it in, that they have an annual report. What does that annual report look like? Is it just something that's simply filled out online? Is it an annual report of how much water, potable water they use and not use? How do you?
The plan right now, actually, the city attorney, which is why he's here, can respond to that question. Mike Rankin.
And then I have one more question for you when we're done with that one. Welcome, Mr. Raymond, how are you?
Good, Mayor. Council members? Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
The water report, you'll remember as part of the presentation, the vice mayor explained that there's separate water metering required for the outdoor usage. So the water report will show what the outdoor water usage was and how that matches up with the plan, the water plan that's required under the ordinance, to see if they're meeting their 50% or not. So it is an annual report. I'm sure as this gets implemented, we will probably have to be a little bit flexible and amend our development standards so that they match up with the types of data that is able to be collected. So we're sensitive to that. But the idea is just to make sure on an annual basis that the folks subject to the ordinance are meeting the obligations of the 50% with respect to their actual usage as measured through the separate metering.
So what you're doing is they're reporting the potable water usage.
That's right.
Not the, and you must have some kind of number, says this plant takes so many gallons a year to water.
Right, it's based on the landscaping, so the landscaping, there's a demand that's measured off of the landscaping, and then you do the calculations based on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
The other question I'd like you to dispel is, you often hear people talk about the graywater, and they say, "Well, I don't want to dump my soapy washing machine on my plants in my yard, it's going to damage my plants." What's the data behind all that? Because I tend to have that reservation and wonder, you know, myself, if I'm dumping graywater for my landscaping, let's say for a patch of grass, and you say, "Well, I'm going to use it to water the grass with." How does that, the chemicals that we put in the water, how does that impact the plants?
One of the, council member, one of the keys to this ordinance, especially with graywater, is the issue of education. And what I mean by that is, with the graywater system, they're literally under the sinks in a graywater system, and a graywater plum house is a knob. And let's say that you're bleaching your bathing suit, which I've never done, but imagine you're bleaching your bathing suit, you would switch it and that water would therefore go into the sewer. If you're simply brushing your teeth, if you're shaving, whatever the case might be, you may want to put it into the graywater system so that it can just go straight into the grass. But even with graywater, or even with the shaving, because of the fact that there's going to be solids in there, you're not going to want that to go through. There are appropriate types of clothing soap, appropriate types of toothpaste, appropriate types of shampoo, all the like, that you would use if you're going to utilize a graywater system.
So you have to start thinking biodegradable and...
You do.
So it's really changing the habits.
It is, no, it's an evolution of the habits. I'd hate to use the word changing, because when I met my girlfriend, there were lots of different things that we started doing a lot greener in the house. So I evolved, I didn't change.
We won't wonder.
And now she's my wife, so there you go.
We'll send her a copy of this recording.
But most of the, every product that you could ever need in order to utilize your graywater system is available at Trader Joe's and a lot of local supermarkets nowadays.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Thanks again, little Raymond. I'm going to get you a fountain pen, and thank you for educating us on what you are so well-versed in, obviously, and sharing some of the learnings from the city of Tucson. Thank you, attorney, for coming up here as well. But thanks for your time, and I'll come down there and thank you.
Great. And we have an Office of Conservation and Sustainable Development down in Tucson. So if you do decide to move forward as a community with either of these ordinances in any way, we'd love to serve as a resource for you.
Thank you. He said a fountain pen. A fountain pen.
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 Really neat idea.
Thank you once again. Now I'll move on to our next presentation from Raymond. Welcome, Raymond, on energy performance contracting, and then he'll move on to the Stormwater Environment, the Science Foundation Arizona Grant information.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My first presentation is on performance contracting for energy efficiency projects. So what is performance-based contracting? Performance-based contracting has been around for a number of years, over 25 years, and it's used by government agencies. It is used in many areas to guarantee the outcome of a project or a process, but it's often used for energy efficiency projects, and this is commonly known as energy performance Retired professor John Sibnik of George Washington University was the editor of the Energy Office's manual on performance contracting. And this quote is from him, "Its purpose is to obtain a better performance or lower cost or both. In other words, things should work better and cost less. If we will not achieve these, it's not worth doing." So what is energy performance contracting? It's just a performance-based procurement method and a financial mechanism for building renewal, meaning it's you're bringing the building up to a standard for energy efficiency or beyond. And with those advancements in what you do, it's paid for by the utility bill savings with those installations. And what you do is you have an energy guaranteed savings procurement contract with language in there that says that if it does not meet what it says it's going to, that energy service company or that ESCO will pay the difference for those savings if there's a shortfall. So in short, energy performance contracting is performance-based contracting for energy efficiency projects. Now, the city of Flagstaff has a project that's going on right now, and that is a 15-year project with the cost of a little over $3 million. And they have a lot of upgrades that they're doing to their existing facilities. And here's just some of those things that they're working on. Lighting retrofits, traffic lights, pedestrian walk signs, energy management control systems. There's just a whole list of items that have that $3.1 million that go into that. Here's their savings that they get from performance-based contracting. They have an annual utility cost avoidance, that means they're not paying the cost of that electricity of a little over $300,000 annually. They have a projected positive cash flow of $252,535 over a 10-year period. Now this is after they take and they pay for the loans that they've taken out to pay for these projects, as well as their performance contract with their ESCO. Now here's, the number that's coming up next is quite stunning. The projected positive cash flow over a 15-year period is $2,571,000. Now I talked extensively with Flagstaff and tried to figure out what the disparaging is with the $252,000 versus the $2 million. And they said it's because their projected length of paying off their loan and their contract, they were able to do that quicker. So the savings that they have on their electricity or their energy use just quadrupled over a five-year period. So they were able to have a positive cash flow of over $2 million, $2.5 million. So in short, that is what performance-based contracting is. And if there's any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Raymond, some of the, this seems to have been getting more press due to the stimulus and some of the federal dollars that have come out for energy conservation. Is that where most of Flagstaff, for example, received their funds? Or you mentioned them receiving loans or to make those improvements?
They, Mayor, they hired an ESCO, an energy service contracting company that came in. They did the audits on the buildings. They told them what they would save if they implemented what they had suggested over a period of time. And then they went ahead and they took out a loan, a loan just on their own to do that. Now, an ESCO will actually finance these projects for you, but they got a better, cheaper rate by going on a loan on their own.
Okay. So basically, their Flagstaff, since they're investing $3.1 million, they're saving $324,000 a year on utility costs. Okay. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Raymond. I just wanted to tie this in with the water conservation, because one of the, MAG had a workshop recently with EPA and ADEQ to talk about these kind of issues. And one of the things that the director of the EQ is always trying to get people to understand is that there's a nexus between water and energy. And some of the findings from that report, I think we may have all gotten this, it's kind of surprising that if you let hot water run for five minutes, it's like letting a 60-watt bulb just burn for 14 hours. And then leaving a light bulb on for 12 hours a day has significant impact on water. You end up using between 3,000 and 6,000 gallons of water annually just for that one light bulb. You think you have the house with the clean energy, but there's a lot going on there, a lot of water use that goes on. One of their keynote speakers said that the water used to produce your household electricity is greater than the direct impact on water that you have just by using water in your house. For example, a typical house uses 400, I mean, 100 gallons of water every day, but uses 465 gallons of water every day to produce the electricity that they use. So there's a nexus between water and energy that hopefully we'll keep in mind as we go down with all of these ideas that are new, but also offer opportunities for us in the future.
Okay. Any other questions for Raymond on this item? Thanks, Raymond. Next is Science Foundation Arizona Energy Grant.
Mayor and Council, a number of months ago, I was approached by the Science Foundation Arizona to participate in... Arizona to participate in a grant that would provide the ability to provide low-interest loans and incentives, educational outreach to the schools, and this is what we have come up with so far. This is where we're at with this program. The Science Foundation Arizona is a group of-- it's a collaborative group of three statewide CEO business organizations, Flagstaff 40, Greater Phoenix Leadership, and Southern Arizona Leadership Council. And what they do is just help diversify the Arizona economy with strategic research and development investments. The Science Foundation is a nonprofit organization. So what can the Science Foundation do for Arizona? The Science Foundation Arizona submitted an application for a federal energy efficiency and conservation block grant entitled No Peaking. The Science Foundation applied for a $30 million grant and $20 million, which will go directly to municipalities with a population of under 35,000. The other $10 million will go to education. They have a-- an education portion that's specifically set aside for the schools and other entities. It is a formula grant, much like the grant that we got from the Arizona Commerce Department, which the town received just a little over $146,000. So with this grant of $20 million, we should go up quite a bit in our allocation if we-- if it gets awarded. Again, Fountain Hills has been asked to participate in a Phase 1 pilot program with surprise Yuma and Hila Ben. So who's going to be involved with No Peaking? It's going to be the town of Fountain Hills, Fountain Hills Unified School District, the Science Foundation Arizona, and ASU. The grant is unique in a way that it brings in an educational portion to the program. We'll be working with the Unified School District, where the kids will be-- they'll have a curriculum that will be administered, that they will go out, do semi, well, kind of energy audits at their homes with their families. There'll be a whole curriculum for that, and then that will be brought back to the school, that goes to ASU and their engineering department, and then they come up with the best use of energy efficiency projects in their homes. And the town will be able to either incentivize them to do those projects or provide low-interest loans for that. And again, that's what this grant will allow us to do. It'll allow us to provide low interest loans, incentives for alternative energy installations or weatherization projects throughout the community. Now, this won't be just for homes, it will be for businesses as well. We'll be able to provide public education throughout the community, doing workshops. So if we need to bring in special speakers or special programs, this grant would allow us to pay for those-- that activity. And this will also incentivize economic development relating to energy efficiency and conservation That, my presentation is over.
Thank you very much, Raymond, good job. Any questions regarding the Science Foundation? Ray, Councilmember Dickey.
Raymond, when do you think that they're going to hear about the grants? What was the timeframe? I don't remember.
Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Dickey, I think that they were supposed to hear this last month, but it's been extended, I think, until the end of-- this is April, till the-- somewhere near the end of April.
Thank you.
And Raymond, a question always asked with the grants, any strings attached to these grants?
These-- this grant is basically the same as the energy efficiency and conservation block grant that we just received. It-- I don't see any-- there is no matching funds for the grant. It's the same process as before.
So it's evaluation of the property and then funding can be granted to the--
Absolutely.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much, Raymond, appreciate it. That wraps up the public presentation, so we'll move on now to call to the public any request or to speak.
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. On the consent agenda, request a motion to approve as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember LaGee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Ashambel?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you very much. Onto the regular agenda, item number four, consideration of awarding a bid to ABC Asphalt LLC for Phase 2 of the alley paving project in the amount of $65,208.63. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me while I work on my technology. Pretty good, I bet?
Wow.
Okay.
You got lucky.
Oh, there it is. Didn't last long, did it? This is just the-- first, a picture of the area that we have up here, and for the Phase 2 alley paving. To the left of Panorama would be the alley that we paved in the first phase, and then to the right is actually the alley that ties in where the park is. So we're actually doing a good job of infilling with this Phase 2. Okay, on August 2, 2007, the town passed Resolution 2007-45. This resolution established an IGA with MAG, where the town committed to provide certain measures to reduce PM emissions by 5% in the Maricopa County non-attainment area. One of these measures is to pave all of the dirt alleys in Fountain Hills. We committed in writing to that-- with that IGA. Last fiscal year, the town paved the Phase 1 alley, as I indicated on this map, located between Colony Drive and Panorama. This year, the Phase 2 alley location is from Panorama Drive to Tioga. Staff solicited proposals with an invitation for bid, IFB. We had 14 interested contractors that came in. Four of these were local contractors. All local Fountain Hills contractors and subcontractors were notified by us by phone to see if they were interested in this project. On March 22, 2010, staff opened bids from five contractors, of which two were local contractors. Bids ranged from $65,208 to $135,000. The apparent low bidder is ABC Asphalt LLC, located in Phoenix. Staff has reviewed their bid, checked their references, and finds the contractor to be in good standing with no negative comments of any concerns for the quality of their work. After the reference check, staff believes ABC Asphalt is capable of performing this work and will do a good job for the town. I wrote down some of the comments that I received when I talked on the phone to some of the references. It said, "We've worked two or three times with ABC Asphalt. We've been very happy with the quality of their work. Exceptional team, great problem solvers. They fix problems when engineers can't," is what the one man said. Thought that was an interesting comment. They paved many, many paving parking lots for M&amp;I Bank, and they have also been very happy. Let me just go through a couple of slides here. This was the alley that what used to be Phase 1 alley that we paved last year, and you probably remember these pictures, so I just brought them back up. This is another section where the alley was paved. This today is the alley for the Phase 1 paving, and we think it's a great job. We think it's turned out real well. It's-- we're not doing any water harvesting in that alley, but I think because of the inverted crown that we have for that, we get good drainage, and we have had some drainage problems in that area. But we haven't had any since we paved this alley. This is the Phase 2 alley that we're presently looking at today for approval of to pave. It has a lot of areas. You see to the left there where there's a couch sitting in the alley, we'll be getting rid of that. When we pave these alleys, we also install no parking signs because we want there to be plenty of direct access for emergency vehicles. That was one of the concerns that we had, there was too much parking in these alleys. They're not wide enough for that many vehicles. You'll also see an old refrigerator sitting to the right up there on the right of the screen. I apologize for the size on some of these numbers, but what you see at the top is ABC Asphalt at $65,208. Hopefully, you can see those better on your screens and your computers. And the prices did-- the bids ran all the way up to $135,806, which is what the budgeted amount that we had in the budget. We also let you know that all of these people that bid had a town business license. We have made that a priority in our IFB now, that before you can even bid the work, you have to have a town business license. So that's been a good thing to have in there. They all had bid bonds, they have their proper contractor licenses. Again, the references checked out. They did the proper documentation for their addendums with us. So it was a very large spread. We feel very confident about this bid, and I'll stop right there and take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? Or let's first get a motion. There's recommended language here for the motion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dickey.
Move to approve the award of the contract, ABC Asphalt LLC, in the amount of $65,208.63 for Phase 2 alley paving project.
A second. All right. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any questions related to this agenda item? Mayor, Councilmember LaGee?
Tom, I don't believe we have that price chart in our packet in front of us, and it's-- even with my glasses on, I can't read those numbers. Would you mind, for my benefit as well as the benefit of the public, just very quickly walking us through the company and the numbers, please?
Absolutely, and I apologize for that. I'm pretty sure we put together this list at the last minute, so that's why it's not in there.
No problem.
We had five contractors that submitted bids. The first line is ABC Asphalt, $65,208.63. The second was, I'll try not to murder this, the Visus, V-I-S-U-S, Inc., $74,154. Performance Paving, a local contractor, $84,166. Double D Construction, also a local contractor, at $93,673.48. And lastly, was Camus Corporation at $135,806.
Thank you. And Mayor, I just have one more question. Tom, in our capital improvement plan for '09-10, how much money was appropriated or projected for this project, please?
We projected $135,000.
$135,000.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I appreciate the length the folks are going to, to reach out to the local market, to energize them and make sure that they're aware of the opportunities to do business here in their hometown, and I'm glad we had some folks participate this time as well. And I think this process, as we've discussed bidding, is saving us a great deal of money. I know it may require a little bit more staff involvement, and I think we're seeing some good results now also, benefiting from the economy being tight as well. So good luck with the project. The first phase seemed to have turned out pretty well.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to item five. We have one report on items five, six, and seven. This will be consideration of Resolution 2010-06, declaring a public record the 2010 land disturbance amendments to the subdivision ordinance of the town of Fountain Hills. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In early 2009, staff was asked to look into ways of making the town's development regulations more user-friendly. On February 12, 2009, staff provided a list of possible ordinance amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff notes and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations were then brought to council on, in March 2009, work study for review. One of the potential amendments discussed was to combine the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, land use disturbance, hillside disturbance, and cut-and-fill regulations all under one consolidated location. The council generally agreed with that idea, and staff went to work to draft these amendments. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing regarding the changes on March 11, 2010. The commission voted to forward the recommendation to approve those amendments, and minutes of those hearings have been provided in your packet. Ordinance 10-01 has incorporated the following changes. In sections of the zoning ordinance where such regulations previously resided, there are now notes directing all parties to consult the appropriate section of the subdivision ordinance. At numerous points within both ordinances, cross-reference citations such as C-section 5 or look at illustration 4 have been amended to reflect the newly renumbered and relocated ordinance sections. The language of the two ordinances has been reconciled. There are many instances of the two ordinances saying almost the same thing, but not quite. We've attempted to eliminate as many of those inconsistencies and other points of confusion as possible, and some definitions have been added or amended to better illustrate some of the other terms. The revised regulations will replace the existing sections in the subdivision ordinance and bring all such related regulations into that chapter, which is Article 5 of the subdivision ordinance. Every attempt was made to not alter the meaning or the intent of these land disturbance ordinance requirements, but there are enough minor changes, such as revised definitions or the minor rewording of paragraphs for consistency, that cumulatively, they add up to what staff felt should be considered more or less a major amendment to the ordinance, and that's why this new public hearing is going to such detail in giving you these ordinances. Ordinance 10-01 is now a fully revised and consolidated land disturbance ordinance that removes the land disturbance, cut-fill, and hillside disturbance sections from the zoning ordinance, moves them all into the subdivision ordinance where they've been consolidated with similar provisions and incorporated into Article 5, thereby placing all such like regulations in one location in order to hopefully make them easier to find and understand for the resident layman. Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation to approve these ordinance changes, and staff recommends a council vote to approve them as presented. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much, Bob. So that presentation covered items five, six, and seven, and do we have any speaker cards on any of these items at this time?
No, Mayor.
All right. Well, so we'll look at getting a motion first on item five. You want one at a time? I think we're going to need to go motion all, each item, and then come for-- go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, let's move the resolution first because that declares the public record, then you adopt it by reference with the ordinance.
All right, so what you're saying is do motion on item five. Okay. Good. Looking for suggested motion language. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hanson.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2010-06 as presented.
Thank you. Maybe we have a second. All right, any comments, discussions for Bob on this resolution? All right. Councilmember LaGee?
Just real quickly, Bob, and I believe you stated this in your staff report, and I had an opportunity to go through just randomly and do some auditing, I just want to make it perfectly clear that this is simply a reorganization of the information, there are no technical changes. For example, cut-and-fill was at 10 feet and it's still at 10 feet.
That's correct. We took zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, put them together, and that's really what we tried to do, the only thing we did.
So there are no content changes?
Well, we added a couple of definitions of things that weren't defined, but other than that, no.
Technical requirements, no changes.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the effort to simplify and make it more co-- I appreciate the effort to simplify and and make it more cohesive. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right. Thank you. Move on now. Open up the public hearing to receive comments in Ordinance 10-01 relating to adopting 2010 land disturbance amendment and subdivision ordinance of the Town of Fountain Hills by reference adopting amendments to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Fountain Hills and providing penalties for violations. Any speakers here?
No mayor.
All right. Close that public hearing. Move on to item seven, consideration of ordinance 10-01 relating to the adopting of the 2010 land disturbance amendments and the subdivision ordinance of the Town of Fountain Hills as presented. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any comments on this? Questions? No speakers? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob, again. Council Discussion Direction and Town Manager, Julie is here filling in. Welcome, Julie. Anything?
Thank you, Mayor. No? Nothing?
I have one thing. Today is the is April Fool's Day, but it is a serious day is that it is census day. So everybody out there, please make sure you fill out your census forms and get them back before you are called, because they will be contacting you if you do not fill in your forms. They'll be contacting people in about the third or fourth week of April. So please get them in if you have not turned them in by today or tomorrow. Please do so as soon as possible. Great News was down at MAG last night, and they have an online tool that anybody can look at, and Fountain Hills was leading the valley in census response rates. So great job to the efforts, great job on the efforts to of staff and others in the community to be make everyone aware of the importance of the census. It means dollars and cents to our community as well as ultimately representation for our state and the numbers of representatives at the at the US legislature. So thank you very much for filling out your census forms. If you haven't done so, please do so ASAP. Next item, summary of council requests, recent activities. Any reports?
Thank you, Mayor. No. We continue to work on next year's budget, finalizing not to give it to the council in the second week in April.
Thank you. All right. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Have a good night.